Good evening, everybody. This is our monthly meeting. I will call that to order now. We have a roll call vote. A roll call, sorry.
Mayor Morandi?
Yep.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
And we have a, I guess to start this off, we have another person on our roll call today. I appointed Tweet Phillips as our new board member. She's on, so if you'd like to include her in the roll call, that'd be great.
Tweet Phillips?
Yes.
Tweets, sorry. It'll take me a while to get my mouth around your name.
It's a lot. Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome. So glad to have you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
So not on the agenda, but as everyone may or may not know, we have a vacancy left when Heidi Trustee Bender resigned. So it's a so I, as mayor, appoint a person if I would like to, which I definitely did and wanted to. And so after talking to just a few people that showed a lot of interest, Tweets being one of them, I interviewed a few and decided to ask or ask Tweet if she was still interested after we went over everything, and she was. So I sent everyone her resume. I think it's a great resume. And especially since most of it's in a background in government, New York City a lot. So I think it'll be a great addition and welcome aboard. And tonight you can feel comfortable. And if you'd like to get involved at all, that's totally fine with us. And if not, we understand and we'll try to bring you up to speed as quickly as we can. You kind of entered at a time when we got a lot going on, kind of finalizing a lot of things. And so anyway, a bit crazier than normal, I guess. That's that. Again, welcome aboard and feel free, like I said, to chime in if you'd like at any point while we're to make and during discussions. And we'll try to get you as much information as we can. I think we have some Google Docs that we will need to send you so you can catch up on those.
Okay, thank you.
So that said, we'll go through our agenda. The first up is financial update. We have Michelle on with us. Michelle, if you'd like to.
Sure. Hello, everybody. Just a quick couple bullet points. I'm guilty. I sent it out real late, but I tried to send it to everyone. I apologize, Tweets. I didn't have your email, so I didn't send it out, but I'm going to read it. And I could always send it to you tomorrow if you'd like. So the first one, as we know, the budget was adopted. So that means our current fiscal year ends May 31st. If there's any spending that needs to be done for the current year, we have about 19 days to do it. Otherwise, everything is going to have to be starting June 1st. Just to keep that in mind, I think I'm going to send out a quick reminder to the departments. Some are on the call anyway, just to get some of those last minute supplies if we need or big expenses that we had planned and maybe didn't get to. We still have some time to do it as long as it's delivered by May 31st. And then along with that, I'll send out the new department budgets. Everything that we worked with, for the most part, was included. We didn't have to get rid of much stuff, so I'll send it out to the departments and let them know what was included and what was not, if anything. So FEMA, ironically, so Sandy just closed out with our FEMA projects. So that's what, nine, 10 years? So now we're working on FEMA from the thunderstorm Isaiah back in August. It came out that FEMA was going to give a 75%. The state's going to match 12 and a half percent. So it's only about 7,000, but it's still money to the village for doing cleanup and generator work. But like I said, Sandy just closed out, so we can't count on that money probably for a couple of years. But the paperwork's all being done now. Our ban was renewed last week. We have an annual ban for water and sewer improvements. The interest rate came in at point four and change. We were anticipating over 1%. You know, so that'll be a savings to next year's budget. The interest rates are crazy right now. So we lucked out. And then I, we pay down principal every year on top of the interest. So the ban amount is down to 2.2. At its highest, it was almost 3 million. So we've been working to pay off those long-term projects as best we can. The federal coronavirus recovery funding. So that they've been making progress on how it's going to work the program, but it's still not clear for local governments. All I know so far in what NICOM has put out, it's going, our money's going to go to the state. And then it's going to trickle down to the local governments. But the amounts are not finalized. They're coming out with guidance, 150 pages worth of what the money can be used for. And it seems like it's going to be much stricter than originally anticipated. So when those documents are finalized, maybe a summary from NICOM, we can send it out and we could all comb through it and figure out how that money's going to work when we actually get it. And then the last thing, just Marie and I have been working to move a lot of the village accounts to solar farms to save 10% on our electric bills. And the firehouse was recently added. Surprisingly, I tried to do it a couple of months ago. They said maybe not because it's too big and I got the bill. So that's just moving forward on trying to get some of the larger accounts on solar to get a 10% discount. And that's all I got, just very brief things right now. We spent so much time on the budget. So it's not too much going on for the end of the year right now. Anybody have any questions?
Just this one on the bonds to bans, since interest rates are so low, is this the time to do that? Or do you have to wait till we have? I'm not quite sure exactly the process there. But since interest rates are really low, is this a time we should consider that?
Um, it's a good question. It would be a good time, probably. I could talk to Munistat, our financial advisors. I think the train of thought was that we weren't sure what was going to be happening with the DEC connection, the aqueduct, alternative water sources. So if we bonded everything right now that we have, because they're all projects are completed, if we needed substantial money, we'd have to start a whole new ban process, which we could do that as well. But the thought a couple of years ago was to just wait and do it all together. But I'm not sure how much money or when we're going to need it for other large projects. But I can ask NOAA what the interest rates are on a bond and what it would take. It is about a $20,000 to $30,000 cost to convert to bonds. I know that. So we've been playing the annual interest rate game and we've been doing really well so far. It just keeps going down, but our luck will run out eventually, like you said.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks.
Bye.
Next, we have report police. Larry with us?
He had texted me a little while ago and said he didn't think he could make it.
Okay. Let me see. We can go through. I'll just summarize. Total number of calls to service was 73. Total number to date is 228. Let's see, the monthly report continued. Total number of tickets issued were 31 and total number year to date is 165. Since I can't answer any questions for Larry, I won't have any questions or take any. If you have any questions, give Larry a buzz. Next, we have our departments. Recreation is Ruth Anna.
Yep, I'm here. So in my report, you can see the approved events to the ones that are happening in August and October. I did send out confirmation letters with clear understanding what the guidelines are for COVID. I sent that to Jeff and to the mayor, so somewhere along the line, you probably saw a copy of that. The bandstand repair and painting is still going on. The highway department did a great job. They did the minor repairs and parking as well as power washing the bandstand. The sheriff's detail has been painted. I think they did three days last week. They did today. It might not be finished until next week, but that's good. It'll get done. I have talked to Robert Downey Bugsy about the flagpole. He indicated that he would talk to the county because we would need a lift to scrape and paint the flagpole. And he says that that might be something that they can help us with. The trees at Mayor's Park. I just heard from Jen about them, because the trees of the tree committee, but Mayor's Park is a recreation committee. But an arborist has assessed the trees and they do not need to be removed. They need to be pruned. My understanding is we can't remove a tree unless the arborist says the tree should be removed. So she's going to be working with some people to see if we can get that taken care of before the May 31st date and utilize funds that are left over in the recreation commission because we saved a lot of money on the bandstand. And I last report, I mentioned that Trevor Knight has been interested in starting up some softball. So I outlined just as quick his email. He's been talking with the Phillips Town Rec and about whether or not they want to help support a softball. So we're going to move forward with that and some kind of conversation, be it a softball tournament on community day or a softball game or, you know, them and us kind of game at community day. But we'll know more at a meeting next week. Depending events, I think you might want to put it on next month's agenda about the Putnam Food and Wine Festival. Because I think you were going to look at that again in June to make a decision. And that's all, except you poached Tweets.
Sorry.
What is this? What is this? You're on the recreation commission and then you become a trustee? Sounds like you did that to someone else, too. Anyway, congratulations to Tweet. She's going to be a wonderful addition. She's very thorough. We enjoyed having her on the recreation commission for the time she was with us. So I know she's going to do a great job for the village. So any questions?
Thanks, Ruth Ann.
Ruth Ann, does Bugsy have all of the dates for the weddings if they need to have the ropes put up?
I'm going to meet with Bugsy. I'm going to try to today was trash day, so it wasn't a great day, but I'm going to make arrangements. Is he on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, so Bugsy, you and I need to touch base tomorrow about Boy Scouts and the weddings.
Hit contact Bugs and asked him if he, I didn't want to just drop the setting up for the bandstand with the ropes on him if he couldn't handle it. And he said he could take care of it, so.
Yeah, I need to talk to him about these events at the Pavilion for the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. I noticed when I drove by recently that the area has been blocked off in front of the Pavilion with no parking, and I'm not sure that was just happened to be when I was driving by for some reason. But for both the events that we have coming there for the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, we should allocate some parking for participants.
I think Bugsy can verify, but I think the cones are set up for Presbyterian Church who then didn't have their service. So I think they've quite a few.
It was weather. They canceled because of the weather. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So anything else you need? Okay, we'll see you guys later.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye, Ruth Ann.
Next, planning board, anything?
Matt's on.
I don't have anything here. Okay.
No, we have no business before us. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Matt. The voice of Matt. ZBA is Erica.
Yeah.
Yes, hi, everybody.
Evening.
Hello.
The ZBA held two meetings in April. At the meeting of April 1st, we had two workshops. 17 Parsonage Street, the applicant sought area variances for an addition to the front of their house that would encroach on the side and front yards. And at 17 Marion Avenue, an applicant sought an area variance to allow construction of a garage that would encroach on the side yard setback. And in addition, at that meeting, we interviewed a candidate for the vacancy on the board, Mary Ann Remy. And she was subsequently appointed to the seat by the trustees. The next meeting was April 15th, and there we held the public hearing for 17 Marion Avenue. This is the application seeking an area variance to allow construction of a garage that would encroach on the side yard. This property was developed after the zoning code was adopted and it has no zoning non-conformities. After closing the hearing and weighing the five statutory factors, the board denied the request. The board found in particular that the proposal would create a significant detriment to a neighbor, that the requested variance was substantial and that the applicant could achieve most of his goals without a variance. So that was it for April.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Let's see, town of Phillips Town, I see Bob on.
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, everybody. And Tweets, congratulations in your position and I look forward to working with you. Okay, first thing on my agenda, as you know, the town hall was renovated over the last 18 months or so. We did move in on April 12th. We're still, a couple of items are still going to be done. We're working off a punch list now. But if anyone would like to stop by and take a walk through, you're more than welcome. Just ask somebody in the air, the doors, you're supposed to have an appointment, but you know, if people want to just stop by and take a look, you're more than welcome to. We approved a few change orders. We held a public hearing last, last week on stormwater management. Our annual report for 2020. We extended a six-month moratorium on developing properties located upland drive, Ridge Road, and Cliffside Court down in content of the village. These are all private roads, but they're in very, very bad condition and we don't recommend any more additional development on these roads. And the people who live on these roads are complying with that. So this is the second time we've done a six-month moratorium. We're working on trying to get a permanent resolution to get that passed as well. Well, we passed a resolution of superintendent of highway to auction off some, some equipment at Auctions International, it's a bunch of older trucks, a roller, there's a pickup truck on there, but I haven't really seen the equipment, but I did see the list of it. So I don't know, Bugsy, if you're interested in anything, maybe talk to Carl. I don't know if you whatever you want to do, it's up to you. Passed a resolution to start the process of installing a pollinatory garden at town hall. The garden club came to us a few, about a month or so ago, and we talked about a pollinator garden at the town hall, which sounds very nice and everything, but it was pretty expensive. So we gave the go-ahead, the lease to start it and we'll see where it will end up if we even get started. But it is, you know, pretty nice from the pictures that I saw. It's basically eliminating the the cutting of the lawn in certain sections, hopefully. We'll see how that goes, but right now we didn't have a budget of almost $10,000 to get that started. It was pretty expensive. Passed a resolution for volunteer firemen, voluntary ambulance corps from 2019, 2020 for length of services. Nate net practice presented the draft of comprehensive plan. If anyone would like to take a look at it, go on our webpage and take a look. It's a pretty easy read. But something that's been nice to look at. We had a brief discussion about the dog park up at Glassbury Court. Right now, there's, yes, if everyone's aware, it's a big fenced-in area for dogs to run freely. But unfortunately, you got big dogs, large dogs, medium-sized dogs, and some smaller dogs get taken advantage of up there. So we're possibly looking at possibly splitting that in half, so we'll be larger or smaller dogs. Some people did, brought that up. This isn't the first time it's brought up, so the second time it's brought up. So we're taking a very good look at this. Garrison Golf Course and Shakespeare, still moving forward our planning board process. That's, we're having a special meeting, matter of fact, this Thursday evening, just for Shakespeare in the Garrison Golf Course. Also Desmond Fish Library, if everyone's reading the paper, they're looking to do a solo array in a discovery trail. Back in February, we had a public hearing and it was almost closed. But then we found out that we were supposed to post a sign. I know you, I know in the village, you guys are posting signs for for planning boards and zonings and so forth like that. So we posted a sign. Then we had many residents that came to the last public hearing. And most of the people really weren't in favor of what they're proposing. Sort of public hearing remained open until we heard the comments back from the Desmond Fish Library and how they respond to those questions that they've given. Update on coronavirus, as you know, we're still doing vaccines. Unfortunately, last week, I was told we had almost 600 files, less than 100 people came. So I just encourage everybody who hasn't gotten their first shot to really think about getting the vaccine. I think it's going to, I think it's everyone's best interest for everyone's, but you can't force people who don't want it to get it, but it's just something I would encourage people to do. We do have an opening on the Board of Assessment Review. If anyone's interested, please contact the town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anything for Bob? Okay. Moving along here, we have HDRB. Hello, Sean.
Hello. In April, we met twice. We conducted the public hearing for a garage addition at 12 Main Street, which was approved. We also reviewed approved applications for a sign at 49 Main Street, a porch reconstruction at 10 Fair Street, and signage and fencing for the new nursery school, the Foundry School at 34 Campbell Avenue, and window replacements and porch repairs at 25 Campbell Avenue, sorry, and the extension of a previously approved fence at 11 High Street. We also reviewed and approved the design for a new shed at the residence of Chair Zalinski. And we met with the owners of Eight Furnace Street about a non-compliant fence, which was installed last fall and workshopping a way to bring that into compliance. And that is now the residence of a trustee, so we have a little form that you have to fill out Tweets when we see you tomorrow. And as for our meeting tomorrow, we just have one new application from 11 Parrot Street. But there are a lot of referrals out, some of which questions that are working through the ZBA process. So we may have a heavy after speaking with, we received the fourth draft from the GIS officer, Arlene, and we will most likely have all of our comments finalized for the trustees to adopt at the June meeting.
Hey, thanks. We had some frozen moments there, Sean, for whatever reason.
Oh.
Anyway, not a problem. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Sean? All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Ghost Spring Fire Company.
Just a, yes, very short report for April, seven calls, two automatic fire alarms, three EMS assists, one brush fire mutual aid to North Highlands Fire, and one mutual aid to the Village of Fishkill Fire. But it was canceled before our company had to go when there was the big fire in the apartment building and companies moved into location at other houses to be ready if mutual aid were needed in other spots. And our, our team did not end up having to go. And Mayor Morandi is working on estimates and plans for the boilers, so that is moving forward. And that's all there is to report.
Okay, thank you. Tree Advisory Board.
Hi, I'm here. Hold on.
Hi, Jen, how are you?
Oh, no.
Yes, very cool. I'd leave it like that.
I don't know how to make it go off that. Okay, I'm leaving it like that. I have a very short report. My son did this. I'm sorry. Tweets, welcome to the board. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering. I have a short report this month. In lieu of our regular public meeting, the tree board held an Arbor Day sort of meetup and a subdued COVID-friendly celebration on April 30th Arbor Day. And we had some flags at Village Hall and streamers on the street at the side of a new tree right in front of Village Hall, who were, was donated actually by Dave Morandi and Stephanie Hawkins many years ago. So thank you, Dave, for donating that tree, funds for that tree. The new Five Years Tree City USA stickers were five years this year. Tree City will be up soon. I have them in my possession. Thank you to the village board and Mayor Morandi for supporting Arbor Day in our village every year. Our recent work of the board includes spring planting. The tireless village highway department planted six trees rather than the originally planned four trees on April 29th with a few of our volunteers assisting. The two additional trees were made possible by private donations by citizens for trees in front of their, on village property in front of their residences. So we thank those private donors for making us able to plant more trees this spring. But most of the thanks goes to Bugsy and his guys, his crew for going out of their way to pick up the trees this year because of, there was some policy changes and they were not allowed to be delivered. And for all the labor of planting, we had a lot of surprises that happened on planting day. And thank you to the water department, Matt, and to the highway department for handling those surprises with good humor and making sure nothing in the village was damaged and making Arbor Day a success. Contract work, seven stumps were ground on Main Street on April 19th to make way for a few of the new trees that were planted. A declining maple in McConville Park was removed this month after we had it evaluated by an arborist, by certified arborist. We had been made aware of possible dangerous conditions in two of the really nice 50-inch DBH willows in Mayor's Park that are looking like they're declining to me. And we had them professionally evaluated by an arborist. The arborist is on our board. So it was for free, which was nice. And we're working with the rec commission and Ruth Ann for funding pruning of those trees to make them safe. But it looks like we'll be able to keep them, which was good. And there, unfortunately, there's one mature maple on Chestnut Street in front of 65 Chestnut Street that we've been watching after a complaint was filed with the village. And it looks like it's really struggling and the arborist has recommended removal. So I will be contacting you, Dave, to talk about whether we can remove that. We're out of funds for a tree removal this in our budget year, but if we had some other funds, it's probably going to be about $1,500 or so to remove that tree. And whether or not it can wait, can be a discussion we can have. And other than that, we're still working on tree management plan updates. Now with our survey and our new tree tags, et cetera, et cetera. It's an ongoing project. So that's it.
Who's, where's 65 Chestnut?
It's right, it's like two clicks down from Drug World on that side of the street. So it's, you know, where Chestnut Street diverges from 9D, kind of. It's right at that Y.
Okay.
Can I? I have a question for Jen.
Sure.
Um, it seems to me like a couple of years back that there were going to be plates on the middle railings around the trees with people's names who donated money for those. Did that ever happen or is that going to happen?
That is going to happen. That's a faux pas or something you want to call it. There's three, there's only three that are supposed to go in that, that were, that have the nameplates that, and they have not been. They're sort of hopefully going to be going in when they repair the damaged tree guards with the insurance money that is coming in. So I'm, the same guy is going to install them then, basically, which might be in the next couple of months, I'm hoping.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully next time you won't be so blue.
Sorry about that. Thank you. All right, I'm turning it off.
Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everybody. So here's our monthly report. The chamber held our monthly virtual meeting on April 29th with a presentation from Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival on their new location plans. Assemblywoman Sandy Galiff and the Director of Putnam Tourism, Tracy Walsh, and the Director of Putnam EDC, Kathleen Abels, were present at the meeting. A presentation was made by Kate Lieberman and Davis McCollum, the managing artists and artistic directors at Hudson Valley Shakespeare. The next chamber breakfast meeting will be a presentation and discussion of the New York Health Act of bill currently before the state legislature that would enact a single payer system providing comprehensive health care to all New Yorkers with no premiums, copays, or deductible. That would enact a single payer system providing comprehensive health care to all New Yorkers with no premiums, copays or deductibles. The bill has gained majority support in both the State Senate and State Assembly. And may come to the floor for a vote next month. The bill's author and lead sponsor will be at the meeting to explain. How it would impact business owners, local governments and residents. And will be able to, available to answer questions from the meeting attendees. The meeting will be open to the public. We haven't landed a date yet, but it'll be posted shortly on the chamber's webpage and we'll send it out in the next newsletter. You're all welcome to attend and I hope you can make it. The chamber has moved forward with getting laminated signage for the Keep Cold Spring Beautiful PSA campaign as proposed and approved by the village. And they've been applied to trashcans on Main Street and the waterfront. Also, we've reached out to Optimum, who will be doing, who did a site survey at the visitor center for installing wifi. And they should be coming to install it in the next week or two. There is an option of either putting it in the utility closet. Where there's other sort of boxes of that sort, or they. Could also install it in the office, but I think they'd have to climb through a crawl space to do so. So I leave it up to the village trustees to let us know if you have a preference or if you leave it to us on that. In the meantime, we're going to do an office cleanup and get the visitor center ready for our volunteers. And at the moment, we have about six volunteers lined up, but we're still taking more if anybody wants to. Work in the visitor center booth this summer. It's really fun. Additionally, we're currently working on the contract with the custodial service for Saturday bathroom cleaning and we hope to have. The service contracted in time for Memorial Day weekend, waiting to begin Saturday cleaning services. We're working on an updated contract draft with the village for the 2020 tourism season visitor center management and aim to send it to you guys sometime this week. Last, we'd like to propose an updated door sign on the doors of the public restrooms, which currently provide last year's hours. We got, we sent you guys drafts of the artwork and with your approval, we'd be happy to print and laminate the signs. And either work with Bugsy or work with our own screwdrivers to get them on the doors. Did you guys have a chance to review those?
I honestly, sorry, haven't. So I will do that. I'll do that tomorrow.
Great, thanks. I just choose an email and if you have feedback or any changes, let us know. The chamber sent a letter to the village on short term rental code proposal this past week to offer our support and suggestions. We feel encouraged after this week's public hearing and feel that with some adjustments for reasonable permitting. And responsible safety restrictions of the short term rentals in the village, success can and will be achieved. We're happy to offer any assistance we may be able to provide to the village through the process of adopting a new short term rental code policy. And there's one more thing I just want to throw in. I don't know, have you guys heard anything from Putnam County Department of Transportation on the trolley? That they've been in touch with you? Trolley season is upon us. We have had a couple of people ask about the trolley, so we shot them an email. And they asked. You know, what? They, they wanted to know what we wanted and I said, you should speak with the village, so I'm surprised they haven't reached out to you guys, but. It's. Sounds like they may be planning to start the trolley again this season, so we'll send you any information that comes through us as it arrives. But we haven't been working with them on it this year.
Okay, yeah, have them in context, whatever, or one way or the other. We haven't heard, I haven't received anything, so.
Okay, well, we'll send them your way and send any information that they send us to you. And that's it for tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Eliza?
Yeah.
I'd like the way you, whoever designed your signs, kept them in the, the color scheme with the other signs you've designed for your campaign, but I like the way it fits together.
Thank you. That was Teresa's good work, Teresa Lagerman. So we've been trying to sort of unify all the signage around the village and. She's been doing a great job. I'll let her know. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Matt here, who's been very busy the last few days for water wastewater.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Matt, how are you?
Not bad yourself.
Good. Watching you push a broom at 6:30 last night.
Yeah.
Impressive. Thank you for all your work there, you and Scott.
Yeah, not a problem, not a problem. So yeah, we're in actually pretty good standing. The reservoir is slightly higher than it were last year. We did have a little bit higher use, probably due to the leak yesterday as well as the warmer weather and irrigation and watering of lawns. So yeah, that was up about 5%, but the bacteriological tests and all tests that were taken last month were found in good standing. Have gotten a quote mentioned last month about the filter rehab. It's significantly higher than previously thought, so that's probably going to have to get pushed off until. Next year or continue looking for additional companies to do the work. The initial PFOS, PFOA dioxide sampling, the first set came back good, going to be doing the second set. Mid-May, Catskill DEP projects, no real update since talking to the Health Department about the backup water supply. The dam's emergency action plan hasn't been updated in quite a while, so I've been. Redrafting that, updating contacts and everything else like that. Was going to reach out to the board and you as well about a couple of empty spots that were previously filled by the. Previous mayor and. Village trustees that have. No longer on the board. And the last we have on the water side is the Badger Endpoint Upgrade. Basically Saks is pretty much the only one that is found capable to available to assist with the endpoint upgrade that's needed by the 20, January 2022. Just basically trying to find the cheap appropriate labor rate to get the pricing quote to move forward with that. Onto wastewater, same thing, we're in good standing. All the analytics came back very good for the past month. Still kind of slowly recovering to where we were with the sledge hauling off the offsite. The E2 ionized inspections, part of the speediest. Speeds requirements for the permit down at the plant, that's probably unfortunately going to have to get pushed back until next fiscal year just because we're having problems getting it scheduled before the May 31st deadline. I did speak to Nelsonville's trustee Winward in regards to the private wastewater line on Pearl Street, still waiting for the paperwork to get. Sent over, so we can approve that. The blower generator building, reached out to Spec to Serve, who finally got called back to today. They were under the impression that the building was done, so. Going to see where they're at, see if they can help as well as look for additional companies to do that and finish that up. And we still have the spray line leak that needs to be repaired at the sewer plant, but. As said, the process isn't really calling for it, so there's really no rush on it, but it still does need to be repaired.
Matt, the, what's involved with the endpoint installation?
Well, if we had them onsite, it could just be swapped out if we wanted to leave them internally mounted in the residences. But pretty much all three companies said that if you're going to be doing a project this large, you might as well move them to the exterior or siding of the house so that. Moving forward, it'd be a lot easier as opposed to going through crawl spaces, basements or utility closets where they're currently mounted. But that's basically really, that's all needs to be done. I mean, the connections are there. It should be simple, just unplug the old one, plug in the new one and then remount it to where it was if we went for the internal. Or. If we're going to move them externally, as all three companies I've spoke to recommended, would be. Going through a foundation or a wall to have it mounted outside.
So you have to run the, you need to run electric to them or what needs to be run to connect them outside?
There's probably about a 20 foot lead wire that comes off of the physical meter itself. And then that wire usually runs along the piping and then mounted to a joist or something inside the basement or crawl spaces so far that we've seen, but. To go through it, yeah, you would have to penetrate the wall or, you know. Drill hole to get the wire through and then just remount it on the outside.
Okay.
So the new meters that we just had installed a couple of years ago, they're inside our homes and no longer going to be there?
No, the meter itself would still be there. It would just be the endpoint. So the little gray box kind of has like a. Half circle, well, half cylindrical thing. That would be the part that needs to get relocated to outside. I mean, it's not a requirement, but it would help communication and easy access for maintenance moving forward.
You have to have consent from the homeowner to drill?
Yeah, but I'm not sure why. I believe they were supposed to be originally externally mounted when they were originally done, but. It could have been one of the reasons why they weren't just done there, or if it was just easier to get it under the time restraint of when they were originally. Installed, but they can still be mounted in there. It's just the communication moving forward with that. I mean, if they're in there and they're. Tucked back behind a concrete wall, that's going to definitely impede the signal getting sent up to the system.
Matt, the old water meters, the analog meters. Those were, those were mounted outside.
Right.
And so there had to be some sort of connection from the interior to the exterior. Is it possible that you could use the same foundation hole?
It would have to be a little bit of a larger hole because it does have a connector on it, so you're looking at from the normal wire, which you could probably do with like a quarter inch drill bit. To go through whatever it was to there, you're probably looking at about a half inch drill bit right now, just to put it through, just because of that connector to. Connect the two parts of the wire to it.
Okay.
So from your, from your experience, it seems like a, like a five minute job if you're inside and if you're outside, you really are adding quite a bit of time to it, a little more skill. Is it really worth it?
Like I said, it was recommendation and it would be easier to access and maintain them moving forward, but I mean, it's not a definite requirement. I mean, I don't know how many of the CDMA's had issues and need to be relocated. I think there was. A couple that Scott had made mention to when it originally got done. But that was the reason why most of them were left there. I guess they weren't communicating, so. Unless there's been construction or something that is put in sun, in front of the endpoint, that would impede the communication. Technically, it could be reinstalled right on top or right where the other original one was.
So I guess we'll wait and see what the proposals come back at.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the cheapest appropriate labor rate to see what it is. I mean, they were kicking around plumbing. Some other stuff that, you know, the top notch plumber rate in the county is pretty expensive for, you know, drilling a hole and then twisting a wire together, but. We'll see what they come up with and then go from there, but yeah, I mean, it has to be done by the. Very 22 deadline or the other, or they just won't communicate. I mean, the meters themselves will still read, it's just. They won't communicate with the system that's already in place, the wireless system.
Matt, could you say that there was a skip when you were speaking? What's the deadline?
January 2022. We haven't been given a date. We were notified, I believe, mid-March that. T-Mobile or Sprint, whichever one bought out each other, was going to be discontinuing the CDMA technology that they're currently using.
Okay, doesn't sound great.
Did you have any good news, Matt?
We fixed the water, hey?
Yes, you did. You fixed the water mainly. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Matt.
Sorry. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
Next, I don't have a Port Building Department.
Nothing was submitted.
Nothing was submitted, okay. Highway?
You're muted, Bugsy.
You're muted.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Better?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. Let's see, for the month of April, we had 48.03 tons. Recycling was 24.73 tons. So in the month of April, we prepped the bandstand for painting by the Putnam County Correctional Facility inmates. Replaced a broken catch basin lid on Marion and Wall. We hung the flags on Main Street. We started street cleaning for the spring and also from the hydrant flush. We filled potholes one time around already. We cut up and removed one tree in the Hudson House parking lot. We removed one tree trunk for the Tree Advisory Board stump grinding project. And we removed two trees for rec department at Mayor's Park and at Dockside Property. We painted the visitor centers bathrooms floors. We painted the walls and the floors of the Mayor Park Pavilion bathrooms. We continued work on the storage area and hauled one load of old lampposts to the scrapyard. We transplanted one tree and planted five new trees for the Tree Advisory Board. We added more lags to the railing cap of the dock to secure them better because they've been getting ripped off a little bit. We cleaned off the roofs of the village office, visitor center bathrooms and the subway entrances. We assisted TAB with stump grinding and cleanup of all debris from that. We replaced three foot of curb at 155 Main Street, had two brush collections. And I met with Kevin Burke of Gabrielle Trucks to spec out the new dump truck, which Michelle already has the specs for. Let's see, we performed an oil change and service of the Bobcat Summit Handling Systems, who we got the Bobcat from, installed a new air stem on one of our tires, which was severed off. We serviced all mowers, blowers and weed whackers. And Hatfield Brothers was onsite to repair the front bucket linkage and repaired the throttle cable to stop it from sticking. For the month of May, street cleaning, painting crosswalks, repairing sidewalks and curbs.
A lot done this month, Bugs.
We're trying.
Good job, thanks.
Thanks, Bugs.
Where Bugsy goes, I was talking to Maria a bit. I forget, how many years ago was it, Marie? We, we checked out Royal and did like a trial run with their garbage trucks. To see what the cost would be if we, you know, parted ways with doing garbage ourselves. We have a bit of a problem with the new garbage truck because of certain parts for it. So right now, we can't, we won't be getting the garbage truck we specked out until maybe, I believe, is it January, Bugs?
December.
December and, or we have, there is a possibility of four that are in production. With a little lesser, but probably acceptable specs that we would be able to get, but that would be in September. So before we purchase one, I would like to. Work with Bugsy. And, and talk to Royal once again, because the truck that we do have now has to be taken off road for probably a week for maintenance issues. So while that's down, we're going to need to have someone collect the garbage and if Royal will do that for us. Bob, who used to drive for us, is not working there, so, you know, it might be an option to have Bob just do the run. And then have someone follow him. I believe that's how they did it last, last time and assess. The garbage pickup for the village and maybe farm out that, you know, that portion of work if the numbers come in right. Last time they came in a bit high, I think things have changed a little, so I think it's worth looking into and I'd like to. Going to follow up on that with Royal and see if they'll, if they can. Take care of us for a week and if they'll also get, send us a proposal. Last time they really didn't come up with a number. Although it sounded like it was going to be higher, but Marie can add to that if, if you'd like, Marie.
Yeah, well, it was about three years ago. It was 2017, 2018. And what they did, Bugsy, you may remember, you may have worked the route with them. Was it you?
No, I was not on the route with them.
Okay, but one of your guys was, right?
Yes, I remember it fully, yes.
Yeah, and it was just garbage, not recycling, if I remember correctly, that they, yeah. So it seems as if they would be capable. They used one of their trucks, correct?
Correct. They used one of their trucks, their driver and two of our guys ride the back.
Okay, so we would have to have the same situation because we don't have the. The garbage pails that they typically use in other communities to dump into the top. They would have to throw it into the back. But, but it would give us an idea of what it might, what they might come up with as a proposal. A price proposal to the village for garbage and recycling. A price proposal to the village for uh garbage and recycling.
Now, see, one of the things Royal, uh, Royal mechanical lifts on the back of their truck. They only have one guy on the back of their truck.
I know.
Their mechanical lifts are not suited for our cans because our cans just vary in shape, sizes, and everything.
Yeah.
Oh, that's one thing that's, they're gonna have a problem with. If we go to Royal, everybody's gonna have to get new cans to meet.
Right, and and one of the, they did give us prices on, if three different size cans, small can, medium can, large can. Um, and and three different prices, and they were very willing to bring the cans to the village office, to the, to a village hall meeting. So that people could see what the size of the cans were, so that they could determine what's best for that particular household.
Okay.
Because I would think that Royal would want to do top dumping as opposed to backloading.
They can't do top dumping in the village.
With the new cans, they could.
No.
Why not?
Because the arm that comes out from the side of the truck.
Yeah.
There's cars on the street. They'd never be able to grab the cans and lift them up and dump them in the top. So it would have to be a manned operation on the back.
But in Nelsonville, what they do is they have somebody run, run and get the can, bring it out to the back of the truck, hook it on, and.
I think we're talking about two different things. There's one where there's an arm that actually you don't need a person, the arm actually picks up the uh
Correct.
The uh, the container that, we're talking like they have in Nelsonville, a person on the back.
Yeah, they would have one person on the back.
And they run and get the can, bring it out to the road.
Yep.
And it hooks on, okay.
Anyway, uh, Maria, could you, could you connect with Bugsy tomorrow and uh and and see what we can do? I know you, you're familiar with the, the people up in uh Royal from last time around.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Question through you, Dave. Is Royal the only game? Is Lombardi, can Lombardi bid? What other companies?
Well, we, I think we might technically have to, uh, I think we have to put it out to bid anyway. Lombardi wouldn't be able to handle it. He's got very small trucks. Um, and then the closest other, I think it's across county. Royal seems to have all the connections and most of, they have a a mini monopoly going.
Right, right.
But there also seem to be, from what we, the uh research we did. Um, they seem to be really good about prices and not, you know, gouging and uh keeping the price. They don't continually jack up the prices. They're, you know, I've had them like in my rentals that, you know, for years, and uh they, they stay really stable as far as, you know, costs go, um, where they, you know, things really have gone up a lot, but they haven't, you know, individually. I I haven't noticed a great jump. And most of the other uh villages around are use Royal. So it's really easy to keep track of them or or get contact or call somebody up and see how, how they feel about Royal. So, which we did.
No, what they, what they would off, what they, we talked about last time was a three year contract. So you get a price and that's the price for three years.
I see. Thanks.
We'll follow up on that. We gotta do it quickly, so who knows where it'll go, but um we definitely have to do something here. Okay, um, thank you, Bugs.
Thanks, folks. Have a good night.
Uh, Justice Court uh fines forfeited bales and civil penalties forty three hundred and ten dollars. Parking tickets thirty three hundred ninety dollars. Civil fees a hundred and forty five. Um, mandatory state surcharges nineteen hundred eighty three for a total of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty eight dollars. Uh, let's see, um, report mayor and board trustees. Fran, anything?
Um, no, we don't have anything. Um, we have, we have put out the last, I do have something, sure. We put out the last um notices on the survey, um. We put it out last weekend. In the process, uh, we got about another forty or fifty survey responses, um, which was a really good number. I put on another final one, um, I believe it was yesterday, let's say Tuesday, yesterday. Just saying that we're shutting down on the fifteenth at midnight. So um, that's where we stand. We're getting a few odds and ends, but we did. We did pick up a good bunch, um, when we put out the final notice, and that's good. So we're in good shape on working on the report. Um, which will be ready for the meeting on the twenty fifth.
Thank you. Marie, anything?
Yeah, Brandon and I are doing a road trip tomorrow. Um, to confirm the VNT um times, uh, hours of the day, number of hours, et cetera. Uh, so that by Thursday, theoretically, the VNT chapter will be in much better shape.
Great, thank you. Kathleen?
Um, I don't have much news per se that isn't already on the agenda. Um, Michelle, I'm not sure if Michelle communicated to you, Dave, that we did follow up on the dam grant that you thought might be a possibility. And alas, there are a number of elements that um made us ineligible at this time. Um, but we're still looking. Um, we identified some possible um, grant programs to look at. So we're both still looking around, and I'm hoping that some of that infrastructure money that is going to come down from the federal level eventually makes its way to us in the village. Um, but unfortunately, that, that one was a no-go. We tried.
Well, thank you. Tweeps, are you there? Would you like to, do you have anything for us?
No. Not at this time. I'm just trying to shove it all into my little brain, so, yeah.
Okay. I just have a couple of things. I'll be meeting with uh Metro North on uh Thursday morning, early, just to go over signage. Pretty much the approved signs that we sent. Um, board members had a few changes they want, which I just sent to Jen Zork, who's helped design them. So uh, I sent them over to her. And uh, so anyway, I'll be talking about where we can place the signs um, down at Metro North. They are allowing us to use the whole uh west side of the, of the southern part of the parking. So it's a long stretch of about fifty spaces. Uh, all facing the river with a guardrail, so.
Great.
So that's great. So I'll meet with them. Um, and also Zoom meeting with Aldane and a number of reps from Aldane. Um, I did a a presentation last week to the board, um, and uh asking if they'd be interested in uh and working with us on the parking lot on Route ninety. Um, they followed up after the meeting and uh with a call. So, you know, we're gonna meet and uh see where we can go with that. Um, so, well, hopefully we can work something out there. Uh, I think, I think it's kind of a no brainer, even if they want to go with themselves. At least somebody in the village will be uh making, benefiting from all the hikers and tourists.
Hey, Dave, um, for the uh parking spaces that are reserved for Foundry Dock Park in the Metro North area.
Yeah.
The sign says that they are, they are in green, the parking spaces. There are no green parking spaces. So the question for Metro North, are they going to require that we paint the Village of Cold Spring spaces in blue or whatever?
I think what we have down there and is different is there's the whole guardrail that goes, runs parallel with the spaces. Or, well, perpendicular to the spaces with uh parallel with the river. So we can put signage on there, Cold Spring Parking with arrows, and there'll be a sign get going there. So.
Okay.
But I will ask that.
Um, Mayor Morandi?
Yes.
I think it's really important to acknowledge the work that you and the parking committee and Marie are doing to use already existing um, spaces, areas that are already impermeable, um, and not, not looking to pave new areas. It's a, it's just, it's a really green um solution, and I, I think it's laudable. I'm, I'm so pleased that Metro North and at least Metro North for now, and hopefully Hal Dane are getting on board.
Well, one of the considerations is potentially blacktopping more spaces.
It's not the worst thing, but, but that you're starting out with existing spaces, I think is really great.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of time and efforts.
Yeah, absolutely, it has.
And we're, we're kind of, uh, I think we're at the, we're, are we talking to Lexi, or not Lexible, uh, Park Mobile again?
No. No.
I missed last meeting.
That they sent us all the materials, which I forwarded to the committee, which is the matrices for spaces, time of day, rate, hours of day, days of the week, um, special occasions. So we have all of that.
Okay. Also, we uh, I did contact and uh Our Lady of Loretto about using some of their spaces. Uh, Larry Burke followed up um with uh Reverend Lutz. And uh, anyway, we'll uh arrange a meeting there. I, he can't really just give the go ahead. He has to go through the whole large diocese and
Oh, gosh.
Do a presentation there or or make the request there. So, uh, but we'll follow up on that. That would be valuable space that, um you know, hopefully they'd be interested in letting us partner with. Uh, I think that's about it. Um, for that, I would like to just thank the people that were on the uh short term rentals. Um, it was another very civil meeting. And uh, I think everyone, you know, made, you know, good points and uh, you know, gave us their position and their thoughts. So uh, to the people out there that are on tonight, thank you so much for uh, you know, keeping everything uh civil. And uh, we'll be uh following up, talking about that in our next uh agenda point. So uh, thank you though. Um, so uh, if there's nothing else from the board, uh, we'll go up with the follow up discussion on the short term rentals.
So the transcription is due, Jeff, um, did, what's, what date did they?
I think I'm back to message you from her tomorrow morning.
Okay.
On a date.
Expectation is.
And we were contacted by the, oh, sorry, Marie.
I, I think the expectation is it'll be about two weeks.
Yeah. It's not that long, so I shouldn't tell. I mean, the mini, meeting itself is not that long, so.
Right.
And then we also received the uh go ahead from uh Putnam County, right, Jeff?
Yes, but, but keep in mind that go ahead was based upon the wording of the, the proposed wording of the local law. Chapter one hundred and chapter one thirty four. So if there are any modifications to that, we would have to go back to Putnam County.
Okay.
Again, but they gave us a very rapid turnaround.
So they.
Two weeks, right?
So they approved as submitted, and if, if changes are to be made, they would ask us to resubmit?
We would be obligated to re.
Obligated to resubmit, okay.
Okay, so, so where to start? I think we need to set uh, uh, one of our next workshops to discuss um, some of the things that were said and some of the changes we might consider.
My recommendation is to first to set an end date for when the public hearing will be closed. And no more um, uh, written comments will be accepted.
Uh, yeah, I agree with that. Uh, since we have the thing back from, uh, since we got notice back from Putnam County, I would I would give it one more week.
On today?
Is that all right with everyone?
Yeah, so. So we'll need to put out a notice about that.
Okay. And that's just for written, written comments.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on that or, you know, the discussion will, I guess, happen in the meeting, but any, any other follow ups on that?
Are we trying to schedule the meeting tonight?
Well, just in thinking about, we've received a number of comments at the, at the meeting itself. And in documentation prior to, and I think we got two more, a couple more already. There are considerations that we can, or deliberations that we could begin now, uh, or soon, not tonight, on the comments that we've received. So we could proceed in evaluating some of those comments um, as soon as, um, uh, not tomorrow night, but Thursday night.
Take, well, uh, what do we have on for Thursday night? Just?
Executive Committee.
Update and code and executive.
Code update, right. Executive Committee and code update.
Okay, I'm fine with that, unless you think we should uh, uh, unless there's other things we should follow up on, uh, code updates, and we could have it, we could, we don't have any schedule for Tuesday, which we, I think we should have a meeting on Tuesday. If, if we want to keep things moving.
So, do you want to do short term rentals, as Kathleen suggested, setting a date for when we will have our deliberations on short term rentals? Do you want to have that next Tuesday? Because that will be the close of uh written comments.
Okay, I think that would be better.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Set that for next, next Tuesday.
Yeah.
I can't believe next Tuesday is the eighteenth, right?
Yep.
Wow, okay.
Do we need to make a motion saying when we're gonna s- close the um the comments, or do we wait until the eighteen to do that?
Whatever, i- if you want, we could make the motion now that we're going to close the public hearing on May eighteenth.
Uh, I think we should do that.
Yeah. Is there a specific time on the eighteenth so that we will?
Five P M.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Jeff, you're in the office, four P M. And that way Jeff will have access to that. So I make a motion that we close the short term rental public hearing at four P M on May eighteenth.
Second. Second that.
Who, who, who got the second in there?
Fran can have it.
I believe I did. I believe I did.
Whoever just wanted, for Michael.
Fran.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. I, I have been in touch with the same person Eliza Starbuck in the chamber was and from Short Tomb Rentals. Um, so I've exchanged a couple of emails with her. She kind of dances around my questions and doesn't really give me an answer. So uh, I've been just trying to find out if they can definitely tell us how many rentals there are in the village in that Cold Spring or the area code. And I guess she either doesn't want to do that, or doesn't feel in support, and or really hasn't given me an answer. Starts going into, well, there's some, some that rent rooms and not everybody's renting at the same time. And uh, so I'm not sure. And she said ninety, but I don't know what ninety means. I asked her if she could clarify is ninety you know, Phillips Town, because Phillips Town has a Cold Spring address, and if you go to Airbnb for Cold Spring in, you're gonna get not just a village, you'll be getting Nelsonville, and you'll also be getting Phillips Town. So, you know, I think it's important for us to know how many actual people, whether they're being used all at the same time or not. I'm sure they're not, that we know.
Doesn't matter, right. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, the availability of them, so.
I'd be surprised if they're drilling down to um municipal level. Do they have a map that they use, Dave? I mean, it seems like that might be a question to ask. Do they, if they, if they're claiming they are identifying those within the village, can they map that?
Uh, I'll ask them next time. I've, I've made my last one really, really clear. Sorry for the confusion. But uh, this is what we need to know and why we need to know it.
It's really not that complicated a question.
And she started getting into uh owner occupied and nonoccupied, and that I should look at other short term rentals that have this. And I'm saying, well, we're not really interested in that. This is what we need. And anyway, didn't get, didn't get very far. So, okay, so I'm moving along. Sorry for rambling. Uh, new business, uh, authorized mayor to sign a M O U with Cold Spring Film Society. Somebody needs to make that motion.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Cold Spring Film Society.
Second.
Any discussion?
We, we don't need to read it into the record, right?
No. Nope, we, we do this.
That would be painful.
Yes, it'll be long. We could do some speed reading though. So, uh, all in favor?
I, I.
Um, if anyone out there is interested in that document, it's probably on the website tonight and uh, or you can ask Jeff for it. Sure, you can dig it up for you.
It's on the website.
Okay. Okay, next is a question for uh, for an annual justice court audit. Marie, do you want to take this? I believe you've done with, have you done with Fran?
Yes.
For a number of years.
Yes.
For the benefit of the public, I didn't understand what this was when it first came out on the agenda. Can you describe what it is? The audit that's done?
Marie, do you want to handle it?
So the, the court has a, a number of materials that have to be verified that they match, such as um bankbook entries. The process that they use to um The process that they use to, to monthly confirm that that bankbook entry is correct. The process that they use to determine the scaffolds. The way they send letters to remind scaffolds, their interaction with the state DMV. All of those things are part of the audit. In my mind, it's, it's as much the process that they use as the materials that they use.
Thank you.
Basically, I believe it's the state internal audit services that sets up what we have to audit and what we don't.
And, and that in fact, they provide a checklist that we have to go through.
This, this particular audit that they're asking for is for 2019, 2020, since because of COVID, we weren't able to do it last year. So another one will be coming up in a couple of months.
And the volume maybe will be a little.
No, we'll do them separately. They get done separately.
The two pieces.
Okay, see you.
Yeah.
But do we need a, a motion on this or just?
No, I'll get in touch with Kathy tomorrow and set, set up the time and date.
Will, will it be Marie and I again this year?
Do you want to, since you're not going to be here next to your friend, you're going to maybe.
It's not clear, it's not clear that either of us will be here.
Including myself.
Yes, indeed.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine doing it, but I can pass if you want me to do this or whatever.
It might be good to have another person on there.
I would say so too.
Follow up too. So Kathleen or Tweet, would you like to do a little auditing with Marie?
Sure, love to do it.
Okay, so Kathleen is, and Marie. Care of that one, thank you. Old business discussing the next steps or reason police reform and reinvention. I think there. This is, I guess Fran has already mentioned the survey. I don't know if you want to go into that a little bit more or Kathleen, if you want to take it from here and. Update us on everything.
And do you want to add anything about the survey or hold off until next?
I'm going to hold off until the 25th, so.
I think we're all just so pleased that the response rate has been so high.
Been phenomenal, so.
Um, so, so the next piece, Dave, I assume that you want to talk about next is the community stakeholders group?
Excuse me, sorry.
Are you wanting to talk about the community stakeholders group next? What is the piece, the element that you're wanting to discuss?
First, I'd like to talk about the, where we are with the policy and, and the review on that. And if you have any idea how long that will take or where we are, I guess we have to figure out. How we're going to break that down for our review and then that review will also go or reviewed by the stakeholders group, so.
Great, so I can take that first. So Larry and Vinnie and I have gone through about 43. Chapters and I have sent to Dave examples of red lines of the chapters and sort of a range of heavily edited. Chapters that, chapters that needed to be made much more specialized for our small agency. From that to chapters in which very few changes were made because they're mostly federal policy and pretty standard or best practices and pretty standard. In the time since I sent those red lines to Dave, I learned how to download the markups with the, so each section of each chapter of Lexipol comes. With a notation telling you the origin of the code of that section of the policy, excuse me, not code. Whether it's federal law or state law or best practices. And initially I wasn't. Able to download them with those tags and now I know how to do that. So you'll be able to see in source code, in the source on the red lines. So the question I had for you, Dave, is if you would like to see, if you would like board members to have. Red lines. If you would like to, I assume that the board, I am assuming and asking the question that the board would like to see the red lines before. Policies go on to the community stakeholders group. And then the third question is how you would like to. Undertake the review of those, of those red lines and, and proposed chapters before they are adopted. Jeff and I had a brief conversation today about. Adoption of, of policy, which is obviously different than adopting a local law. And asking the board whether we feel that the community stakeholders group is sufficient public input for the board to then. Adopt policies that, that Larry and his team can put into practice. It would be my view after having sat with Larry and Vinnie and then also had some input. From Tom Sierra, that if the, the, the more basic policies that we can get to them sooner, the better because. They would, they would begin to have something in place to use on a daily basis. And again, as a reminder, we prioritized. Those, those policy chapters which seem to be overlapping with the executive order. So more a series of questions than statements. Looking for how you would like to proceed with the chapters. Dave, did you have any feedback on, on the red lines that you looked at and your sense of the kinds of changes that we're looking at?
I can honestly say that I have not looked at them.
Somehow, given the, the week you've had, I don't, I don't think that's unusual.
Lack of time interviewing for, for the trustee spot.
Yeah.
And everything else. So I, I haven't looked at it, but I, but I will.
Can I make a suggestion then that might, might help?
The other, also the other board members might, oh, go ahead.
That's what I was going to suggest, that maybe I share those, those five sort of example chapters in red line with. Marie and Fran and Tweets to get their sense of how they feel about. The other, the other thing I was thinking about is if it's helpful. If you would like to, to see how the chapters begin in Lexipol, I'm happy to sit one on one with folks or on a Zoom meeting and sort of talk you through. Walk you through the process of the changes that happen. The vast majority of the chapters have very little change. Some of the chapters like officer involved shootings. Things that, things that would be, have very local. Specificity for our agency, working with other agencies, those have higher levels of modification, but most of them have very few. We're doing, you know, a number of. Them versus he, she. It's a lot of officer in charge versus. Other ranks that would, that would exist in other departments. Basically Larry, if left alone, Larry would be referring to himself over and over again because there isn't that. We don't have the same levels and chain of command.
Can I, can I ask the, the examples that you are talking about? Are they real chapters or are they just, are they real chapters or?
They're the chapters. I'd have to look it up. Honestly, I don't remember which ones I sent to Dave. I can look it up really quickly.
So you, you, I don't know, you have completed 43 chapters, right? So instead of, instead of sort of divvying them out little by little, can we just have a.
If you like.
We can take, I mean, my call would be tell us where they are. You know, if, I mean, not that I'm going to run to it because you know, you know, code and V and T and everything else, but. In the process of looking at everything else, I'd like to maybe once in a while take a look and say, okay, I've done chapter X and X. Check off Fran for that chapter. And then, you know, rather than divvying them out little by little, if that works for people.
What, whatever works for you. I put them in, I sent a small group at first, so it didn't feel like I was just dumping a mountain on Dave. But if you would like them all in once, I can, I can do that for sure. The question for you is, in, in order for me, I have to, I have to play with it, but currently. When I bring the, when I bring the red line down from, it's a PDF that comes down from Lexipol. I assume that you would want to be able to make comments in a Google Doc in the way that you have with other code. I just need to figure out, I just need to figure out.
Or in a Word document.
Yeah, I just need to make, make sure that the red lines stay when I convert it over.
I may leave the, I don't know, you know, if everyone else is comfortable, leave the PDF and I'll just, you know, put a comment on the side or something to that effect. If that can happen rather than messing up your PDFs.
That's fine too. I'm, I'm very, I'm very flexible with, with whatever you think. You're most comfortable with. I'll start out with the PDFs and if you find that another format would work better, let me know and we'll change it up. There really, it sounds like a lot to say 43 chapters. Some of them are a page long or too long. And, and it's, it's not, it's not the dense, it is not going to be as, I don't think that it will be as time consuming and. Bit of mentally challenging as code was because you were thinking of lots of distractions in code. Say that again?
No, it was, is, code is.
Is, yeah.
It still is.
Hopefully it will be, hopefully it will be less painful. So.
Catherine.
Dave, are you, go ahead.
How many chapters are we talking about? You said 43 have been done. How many are there?
There are 150 some.
We've got less than a third done.
But when we do sit down, I mean, it's going to take a while. There's no question. It's going to take a while. And the other piece that's important to bear in mind is that. Lexipol is constantly updating with law changes. So for example, in our work session last week, we learned how to incorporate. Policy revisions that come after you've modified a chapter or before you even begun and how to do a side by side to see what you have changed. You know, how, how you have customized a chap, customized a chapter versus how new law changes began. And unfortunately, there isn't a way to, there isn't a way to. To download, but I'd love to be able to show each of you is the guidance documents that come with policy updates. That give you sort of the background for why a policy changed and what the source is. I think it would be. It'd be just a very useful thing for you to, for you to be able to see, to read those notes. And if you do have, if there are particular questions that you have as you go through chapters and you want me to pull out the policy notes, I can. Copy and paste into a Word document, not that, excuse me, not the policy notes, but the modification notes, the source notes. It's, it's going to be a little bit of maneuvering back and forth unless, and you know, no, not really unless it's going to be maneuvering back and forth to get you, to get you the background documents.
So 43 out of 150 have been done. What, how many pages are we talking about?
Well, I'm just going to hold it up. This is it. It's like 750 pages. It's a lot. It's a lot.
But this doesn't, this doesn't have to be done. I mean, we're not at the, at the urgency that we are with the code.
No, 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 no.
But there is a date when you plan to turn these over to the CSG.
I would like to turn them over for public feedback as, as soon as we're comfortable so that folks can, so that we're not. Dump, 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 excuse me, what's the word that, so that we're not, um, Lexipol uses the word. Dump trucking, that you're not unloading a whole pile on people, but giving them to them in sizable pieces in the same way that I gave Dave five of the 43.
So in the process, we still need to advertise or do something in the terms of getting people to get on the CSG. And we need to move on that so that people, and I know you sent us something.
And thank you for, thank you for putting comments in.
Basically put. Something in the paper or something on the website that says if you're interested in doing this, you have to send us a letter telling us. And we also need to let people know what the commitment is. It's not a, you know, once in a while, it's a two year, twice a month, four hours a month commitment.
It's got to be more than four hours a month. Four hours a month is just meetings. And, and it seems to me that people have to read before the meetings.
Right.
But so right, it's, it's not, it's not two years because the, the commitment from the CSG ends in March.
That's what we laid out originally in the plan, looking at policy review and looking at the, the survey review. It may not, I mean, it's a plan. It. Not to be realistic, we may have to modify.
There was a tentative schedule, right?
Schedule, yeah.
Wasn't a set in stone schedule.
Exactly.
Even with, even with a tentative schedule, is it realistic that the committee members will be able to get through 700 pages of documentation in 10 months?
I think once you see, that will be easier to get a sense of once you see the chapters and see how. Easy it is to get through them, how they're, they're very, the, the language is quite plain and most of the chapters are not. Are not dense reading. So it sounds, it sounds like a ton when you say 43 right now. And the hardest, the, the, the most. The most time consuming element of that was actually working with the software of reviewing through those 43. Marie, I think I take your point that it would be right now, the draft that I put together referred to time in meetings, but I take your point that it should probably. The requirements, participation should reference outside work.
So, so let me ask a different question. Is it reasonable for a committee to go through all of those chapters?
I don't think necessarily that, that the stakeholders group needs to go through all of the chapters. That's one of the reasons when Larry and I began the work that we prioritized. The chapters into those that we felt overlapped with the executive order and those that did not. That's a much smaller subset and I think much more appropriate to. What would be the, sort of the, the purview or the remit of that board is to look at that first set. That, that document that shows this, the sorting of the. Of the chapters is up on the Google Drive. Many of the other chapters are the things that. You know, there are, there are personnel chapters about smoking in uniform and lactation leaves. Native American Grave Repatriation Act. A lot of the stuff isn't necessarily what will have overlap, what, what will have logical overlap. With the community stakeholders group. So you could absolutely chunk down to that session. I would encourage you to look at the. Spreadsheet again and see the way we've divided the chapters and see how you feel about the way we've, I haven't had, we, we, none of us have had, had. An opportunity to really talk to each other about the way that work plan was laid out, but that was the logic of laying it out in that way, just to prioritize.
So I would think that getting together some people who are interested in at least volunteering, now I, I envision that this community stakeholder group is going to probably go the way of the. Not the code, maybe the code update committee. You know, you're going to have people who are in it and after the six months are so burnt out and you're going to, they're going to leave and you're going to get new people in. You know, and, and so we need to, you know, we need to get moving on getting those people and they're, they're. Part of their job is to look at the, the Lexipol and part of their job is to look at the survey and part of their job is to look and see. You know, to come back to us and say, this is the way we think our police department needs to change or not change.
Or here, here are recommendations. Yeah.
So it may not necessarily be that they have to go page by page over the Lexipol code.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, that may not be their job at all. I mean, they, because as far as I understand, the Lexipol, all the rules and regulations are going to go on the website for the public to take a look at, right? That's going to be a public document and it may be open at times for, for a certain amount of time unless I'm wrong. For a public comment, not, not a public hearing, not a public meeting, just, you know, say something, you know, send us an email or send us something in writing. And, you know, and just take it from there. So I mean, we're talking a year or so down the line and I'll be long gone, but other than that, I will still.
Maybe, and you'll be missed. Did you see Marie's face collapse when you said that? I think, Marie, your suggestion is, your suggestion is right. And I think focusing on that, that first section of the chapters is the right, is the right sort of chunk of work. For the community stakeholders group, but I'd love to have feedback if you see other chapters that you think should be included or should not in that spreadsheet.
So do we have, do we have?
And that feels doable over, that feels doable, much more doable over. The period of time laid out in the, in the plan, the March, March 2022.
Do we have a schedule as to when we're going to get the ad out for the community stakeholders?
I, as soon as you're ready with your edits, I'm.
You know, could you, could you send it to us one more time?
It's on the, it's on the Google Drive. You've made comments, Dave has made comments, Fran has made comments. I'd like to give Tweets an opportunity to look at it. So she can make any comments. One of the, one of the questions I, I'd appreciate you thinking about is. You know, my suggestion would be that the, that the ad itself have the responsibilities truncated. You know, it's shorter just to save space and in a paid ad and that the full, the full responsibilities be available on the village website. Does that make sense?
Whatever. I, I will need to, I need to look at it again.
Okay, it's on the, it's on the drive and there's, it's just waiting for, for your okay.
Okay, so send that to Tweets and, and while I'm thinking, Marie, can you send all the code update stuff to Tweets also to Google?
Tweets, do you, you have a village trustee email yet?
I believe it's being worked on. I don't.
I should have that tomorrow.
Okay.
It'll be trustee dot woods at coldspringny dot com.
I'll give you the link for the Google Drive for the code update and I'll add you to the people who can review and comment.
Okay, thank you.
And Tweeps, the, for sharing the Google Drive, we all have set up. Trustee Gmail accounts so that we can share out on the Google Drive.
Okay, okay.
So we don't have to have stuff landing in your personal Gmail account. You can have a trustee Phillips. Or trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Woods. Do you, do you use Phillips or Woods as your star name or both?
Both, but in case I think Woods is probably is Phillips Woods is a bit of a mouthful, so we can.
This, this village is up for double barrel names.
It is what it is.
Is what it is indeed.
One of the responsibilities of the the CSG is to come up with two new surveys. And observing the ergs of energy that was spent on the original survey. To have to do that twice more and then capture all of the responses and follow-up emails is. That's a lot of work, which is supposed to be accomplished this summer, right? So that the summer visitors are captured, their comments are captured. Should that be deleted or should it just be?
I would leave it to the, I would leave it to discussion for that group to take on. You know, that was, that was among the feedback that we had.
I'm just asking, I'm asking the trustees now.
Asking me. I would, I would leave it and let that committee discuss it.
Yeah, I don't see the visitors. Being able to respond to the extent, I mean, I'm looking in my head at, you know, we sent out seven hundred emails requesting responses and we got back. Three hundred and sixty or so. We we went through and door about eight hundred tags saying, do you wanna pay for survey? And we got back thirteen. My thoughts are, if there is a survey for for visitors, it's probably gonna be a paper winner. It's going to be people walking up and down Main Street saying, could you answer five questions for me? So it's gonna be a whole different ballgame. I don't assume people, visitors coming in and going to be sending us, giving us an email address. I don't know. I mean, that's, that's my vision.
The way that Stup, that the Corning Police Department in Steuben County, which is also a heavily. Visited tourist area did theirs is they had cards printed up with a survey link. Like, much like we did with door to door, that could be handed out to people on Market Street in Corning. And then also they did have volunteer survey takers on their Main Street, their markets, Market Street, which is their Main Street in Corning. Clearly, it's a lot of work. I think that that committee has to, the stakeholders group has to decide whether they're up for it or not. But we did feed, hear feedback that that would be valuable, so I'd like to put it before them for them to determine whether they want to take it up or not.
I'm totally, I was against it when we started. I still am, and I think it's up to the board whether we want them to be reviewing that. I, I really don't. My reading again of of this reform from the executive water is about communities and the police in the communities. And reaching out to communities and. I, I, you know, I, I don't, I, I'm not gonna change my police force if, you know, a lot of the people probably that will make comments. So maybe have been people that got pulled over and got a ticket. And I just don't know. I I just don't see the value in it. I mean, I can see value in it, but not, not to in response to this executive order.
So I guess the question I have for you, Dave and others, is why did we include it in the plan?
I don't know. I probably argued for it and then gave up.
I'm fine with with having the, the group take a look. I think when the group realizes they have to prioritize what their responsibilities are. And it's gonna be their responsibility. To to see what, I don't envision there being a lot to it. But, you know, it it's there now. It's gonna be the group's responsibility. I'm fine with just letting it, letting it ride that way.
I think that if you. It, this is a public document that was accepted by the board and sent to Albany. I tried to make the job description jive with the plan that we put forward. If it goes to the community stakeholders group and they decide that it's not something that they think is needed or it's something, it's more work than they can do. Then that's fine, but I think for us to take it out now and not be consistent with the plan is not a good thing.
Kathleen, when the plan was originally developed, we hadn't done the original survey. We had no idea how much work it was going to be to set it up, to send it out, to get the responses back, to follow up. And the analysis still needs to be done. At the same time, I, the members of the community stakeholders group have no idea how much time it has taken. The Village Board to go through. A, a small number of chapters of the code. And it's just been an enormous amount of time. So yes, you're gonna be, we're gonna be asking for volunteers. We're going to be saying two meetings a month and some reading, but it's a lot more work than that. That people will be asked to do and and I fear that they, they have no way to, to gauge. The amount of time and effort that will be involved in doing those two more surveys. And reviewing just forty-three chapters.
All I can, all I can say is that we'll have to see how the work goes. I think every community across New York State has been asked to do this. And it's been new to every community and community stakeholder groups in different municipalities have approached their questions in different ways. There isn't a roadmap necessarily for every detail of the process. I would say put our plan forward to the committee. See how, see how they feel about the work before them. Let them modify. I would rather let the community stakeholders. Make the decision than impose, impose our strictures on them. This is the plan that was put forward and on which we had public comment. And on which we voted. So let them take the plan and and make it. The cold spring, the cold spring plan. Let, let them.
If it's our, the plan that the trustees sent, why would you give it to someone else and let them change it and not the people that created it? I mean. We, we penned this and and then we're sending it to them, so.
Understanding why this is a surprise, this community stakeholders group is a surprise because.
It's not a surprise. I was against it from the start. I was against ninety percent of what we're doing from the start. Here's my argument did, so I'm just reiterating what I thought at the beginning.
Excuse me, Dave, I'm sorry. The option is, if you don't want a community stakeholders group. The option is, since we're supposed to be soliciting the public and engaging the public, the option is for this board. To carry out that process and take feedback from the public. That's an option too.
Nobody said not to have the group.
I guess.
What I heard was, we were discussing the survey from, you know, from visitors. That's all I, that's what we were commenting on now. I don't know how we got to.
Well, because Marie was raising the amount, Marie was raising the amount of work that constitutes policies, policy review and surveys. And analysis, so that's what I was responding to.
I don't think there was any. Discussion on on doing with the, the survey group. I just think that, you know, I think that, you know, realistically, we're really, we're realizing what we're dumping on a group of volunteers. And then they're gonna have to like take the look at the whole thing and figure out how they're gonna do it. I mean, I'm envisioning not a huge group. You know, so and so at this point, they'll, they have to prioritize what, what is there and what. They may not, they may feel that like, you know, information from visitors is not a priority. They wanna look at the, the code and the, and the book and the.
So let's give them the opportunity to make those, to make those choices. I mean, right now, we're, we're cutting, we're cutting off the opportunity. I've taken what we voted on as a plan and put it in to a description of duties. And that, that group can come back and say, that's too much, or we're not interested in survey. We have enough. We feel like we've learned enough in the policy review process. We don't need to do that. I think part of this is letting go a little bit and letting. And and we're supposed to be letting folks ask, ask questions and make recommendations. Let them chart their course a bit.
And I think what, what I'm concerned about is the workload that, that I see. And Kathleen, please, my comments have nothing to do and it's not a criticism of, of the plan that was set up. But we have a better understanding now of the amount of work that's involved. I, I would hate to set up the community stakeholders group for failure.
So how about? If we, why don't we hold this, I would suggest that we table the conversation until all of you. Have had an opportunity to look at the markups at the chapter and get a feel yourselves for. What it looks like within, within a chapter, what the kinds of markups that we're dealing with are. You, you need part, part of what. Part of what has taken time is going through and having the discussion of the chapter and. With, with Larry and Vinnie and customizing for cold spring. The read of the chapter isn't necessarily going to be. As time intensive as that work was. So I would ask that you hold the conversation until you have a look and and get a better feel for the chapters within the chapters themselves and the markup. And, and as part of that process, I'm offering to meet with any of you if you want to look at. The electronic version to see how the, how that process works. And remember that that piece, that piece which took. Larry and me so long and Vinnie of actually inputting, having discussions and then inputting the changes. That's, that's a larger amount of time than it will be for a volunteer to be reading a chapter. That took, that took conversation and actual, right? And it took two, two steps of work because we wanted, Larry wanted very much. To meet in person and be face to face and not on a screen. He hates working on screens, so does Vinnie. So we met at Village Hall. The, the wifi in Village Hall is not, as you know, in that back room is not good, so we worked on paper. And then I came home and input the changes into the electronic system. So it has been slow and cumbersome because of those factors. But those were choices that we made along the way that elongated the process, the open, the beginning process more.
I have no idea how much time you and Larry and Vinnie and Tom have spent on this. My, so my comments have nothing to do with the amount of time, the, the number of hours that you've spent. But rather a comment on how much time it's spent, it's taken the Village Board to get through. However, many chapters we've gotten through thus far.
You yet though, so you don't know how much time that's going to take. Dave has had them, but you haven't seen them yet.
No, no.
You don't yet have a sense of how long that's going to take.
No, I have no idea how long it's going to take. Again, my fear is that we're setting the, the, the CSG up for failure with the. The non-resident survey, sorry, visitor, there are two surveys that they're, that they are being identified. Two surveys are identified for them to develop and transmit somehow and get responses. And evaluate them. And then there's the policies that they're being asked to do. And then there are other responsibilities as well.
The other, the other responsibilities are reporting back to the board on progress and making recommendations. You asked, when we were, we're all, when we were all editing the plan together. I don't remember which of the trustees, but someone specifically asked for monthly reports, which is absolutely the right thing to do. Monthly reports and then preparation of recommendations at the end of the project. So. Those are the pieces.
So it's two surveys and reviewing the policies. That's all they're being asked to do plus one.
And I think, I think that, you know, they're gonna need a little guidance on what we feel is important. What we feel, what we feel is priority in my mind, priority is right now, the Lexipol piece that has to be done. That's gonna be the piece that we really, really need.
Yes, because Larry would like to have those on the ground and and.
You know, anything that, anything that. They can pull from the survey we've already done that adds to that based on what the, what the current community wants is, I think, important to them. But, you know, and they may find that the rest of it, they don't have time for, or energy for, or whatever. And and like everything else, like all the rest of our boards, they are volunteers. These maybe, you know, and we need to, we need to.
The first thing we have to do is the board has to review all of these and. Right now, we have public hearings coming up. We're working on, when are we doing this, you know? No way we're getting it done by March and there's no way that they're gonna get this done by March.
So again, I would ask that we, there's no, there is no urgency in terms of deadline. There's no urgency in terms of.
But there was an urgency when we started. Huge urgency.
Because we had to turn it a plan and we did.
To have it by April first.
We had to come up with a plan that, that you, you agreed on. We could have came up with any plan or a more simplified plan, which still would have been a plan. Which was my argument at the time, but instead we had to, you know, incorporate all of this into it and with deadlines and dates on it. So now if we're gonna follow our plan, there are deadlines and dates which were submitted and agreed by the board, so.
Right.
Saying we don't have to follow those.
No, Dan, what I mean is, what I mean is, there is no outside, there's no outside force like the governor's office giving you an April first deadline. You, this is, this is a projected calendar. You, you asked, someone on the board asked to have a calendar, a timeline. Applied to the plan. So I drafted a timeline. You all gave comments. We all gave our best. Given, given lots of unknown factors, we all gave our best effort to estimate what seemed to be a reasonable timeline. Understanding that it's a plan and that timeline could shift. It is a, it's a draft timeline. It's in a draft plan. So now we're at the point where the work begins and I have, I'm, I have provided you. The, uh, some initial chapters. I'm going to provide them to the rest of the board and I think part of this is. We have to see in the same way that we have to see how long the survey went. We've got some goals to reach. We've got goalposts by way of the plan. But no one's going to fall off the face of the earth if a plan needs to, if a deadline needs to get shifted. Or if the community stakeholders group says, you know what, this is too much. We've, we feel satisfied with the work that we've done.
I would just like, like you to go back to when we started this and 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 listen to what you're saying now and what was said back then. Because there's totally two different things. Right now is exactly what you're saying is what I was saying at the beginning, but that's not how it was accepted back then. It was a plan. We don't have to this. There's no urgency. There is no policing that's gonna go on, but that was all, fell on deaf ears back then. Go back and listen to those meetings because now it's a totally different conversation we're having. Different feel about, of, of, you know, how we're approaching this plan. The plan, now what you're saying is exactly what I thought at the beginning, but that's not how it was constructed and that's not how the meetings went back then.
I think that we're all doing our best with what we have in front of us, right?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that at the time, you, it seems like you've totally done a flip on what you were, what you were saying.
To work with, I'm trying to work with you and the rest.
Work with you too, but I'm just trying to say that at one point I was ignored and my thoughts were ignored back then. Because of the pressure to put on by yourself and this vendor, a trustee vendor at the time, to move this forward in a way that you thought. Was the answer to the executive order. That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying, go back then and listen and see how frustrating this would be. If that's what your thoughts were now and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh my God, you know, now we're doing that or.
Dave, I don't, I don't answer for former trustee Bender. I only answer for myself, first of all.
Say you had to. I said at the time, there was pressure put on both of you. It doesn't mean you have to defend her or say anything about her. What I'm saying is at the time, there was pressure on this board from both of you and, and trustee Bender at the time. And I'd ask you to go back and look at that and see the pressure and see what was said and, and just have, just feel. Feel for what was like then and what it is now. And it's a, it's a complete reversal. Was it was an urgency. We had to do this. The executive order was this. We had to do this, this, this and this. And my thing was, we could design a plan right now and we could submit it as it is because it's a plan. As you said now, it's a plan. That's exactly.
I'm sorry, you're, you're breaking up. I don't mean to be interrupting you. I'm sorry that I'm interrupting you. It's the break in the, in the internet. It's not. It's the break in the transmission. It's not me trying to cut you off. I'm not sure what it is that you would like to hear from me this evening. If you need me to say Mayor Moran. would like to hear from me this evening. If you need me to say Mayor Morandi.
No, I don't.
You're right. But I, I'm happy to say for whatever it's worth, if you believe you were right, Mayor Morandi, you were right. I will tell you that I think this board did a really great job working together to come up with a plan. And now we're attempting to work together to see the plan through. And that's, that's the best any of us can do.
So, so that's what I would say is that we should just put all this, that everything that was in the plan and, and and I, I hear Marie's concerns totally. I think that there, you know, are, are we going to give this, uh, this stakeholders group a time, a time to have things completed? Is this going to go on forever or what? How, how are we going to the timeline?
I've, I've laid it out in accordance with the plan that was approved by this board. You've had the document for a couple of weeks and have been invited to comment on the draft. I understand that you have been under a great deal of time pressure and were able to comment this morning. I'm not sure why there's tension at this stage. If there are things you want changed in the draft job description, or you want changed in the timeline, you can simply recommend them as, 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 as anyone else on the board can do. I'm not sure why there's this anxiety.
There's not any, not any anxiety on my part. My, my, my frustration is feeling, listening to what you're saying now and reminiscing or going back and reflecting on how this started. And that, and I don't need an answer and I don't need, uh, and I don't need to be right or wrong. I'm just saying that it seems to have taken a totally different direction now. And that is really frustrating to me from, from the beginning. That's all. I'm going to end the comments now. Um, what I'd like to do right now is I would ask you to send the five chapters or whatever you had sent to me to the other trustees so they can see them.
Sure.
And then we can see what we're up against. And then I believe at our next meeting, we're, we're getting late. We still have a couple of things to do, a couple of, uh, look quick items on our, uh, on our agenda. We haven't heard from the public yet. So, uh, I don't know if we'll have time for that tonight. So I'd like to send those, send those five drafts. And then I believe at our next meeting, we should add when we're going to advertise for the stakeholders and agree on the advertisement and, and get that rolling.
At the next meeting, you said?
Yes, we can put it in our next meeting. I believe we can fit that in. I don't think it needs to be a long discussion. You have an advertisement sample. I think we can work with that and, and send that in.
Kathleen, you had suggested a condensed version for the for, for the, uh, publication. That would be very useful, I think.
Okay, so it's on, it's the document that you all have already commented on, on the Google Drive. In front of you already and you've commented on it.
But that's fairly lengthy. I, I thought you had said a condensed version.
That condensed version is in the Google, Google document that you've all commented on. I, the last, the last co- comment that I say here is a description of specific duties is available from the village clerk. And then the comment to the side is is that better than listing duties in the ad? I'm fine with either, but I'm thinking of ad cost. So. Document.
I, I, I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the, the version that you send us of the five chapters, um, I'm really bad with PDFs. Can you send it in a word version?
I just need to play with it a little bit to make sure that the, all of the markup comes through in a way that's legible. So I sent it to Dave as a PDF. Uh, give me some time in the morning.
Sure.
Play with that and make sure that the red lines come through and then I'm happy to send it out. And Dave, are you wanting just the five right now? Or are you wanting all forty-three of them?
I'm sending, I, I think you should just send five out so everyone can get a feel.
Okay.
Then you can send them all if you want. Just look at five.
I think it will feel less overwhelming if you have the five examples first.
Yeah, just.
That's what I was suggesting when I sent out that email last week.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Marie.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, um.
So I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, the bill's batch number six thousand in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second that.
Discussion. On favor?
Hi.
Next is approval minutes, uh, four twenty four twenty, let's just say four twenty-two, oh, four twenty-two, sorry. Two thousand twenty-one. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is four twenty-three, twenty-one. I'll make a motion to accept or approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And finally, four twenty-seven, twenty-one. Make a motion to approve.
Fran has a problem.
I have a, a problem. Sorry. I, I promised I did this. Um, okay, um, we just need to add in the four twenty-seven minutes be, right underneath the section on community day, the approval of previous minutes. So, um, I think Jeff, Jeff added it today, but didn't get it out to us. So there was approval of the April sixth minutes by Dave, uh, seconded by Marie. Uh, approval of the April eighth minutes by Dave, seconded by Marie. And a request to table the April thirteenth minutes by Dave and, and I seconded that. So that needs to go in there. And I think, um, if we, if we can approve this tonight as amended, I'm good with that.
So second that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve it as amended. Three secondings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, do we have public comment? Cause we can try to fit some in. If anyone held on this long. Anyone on, Michael?
I don't see any hands either virtual or
Have my hand up.
Actual. Except for Eliza.
Hi, everybody. Um, this is Eliza Starbuck at one seventy-three Main Street. Speaking as a resident. Uh, I just want to show my gratitude, um, express my gratitude to Kathleen. And, um, for the immense amount of work. I mean, you've done contortions to work with everybody and try and communicate this plan for police reform. It is not simple. And I think everyone's anxieties expressed here just goes to show how uncomfortable this process is and how uncomfortable it will probably continue to be for everyone. Because, uh, as I mentioned in a recent meeting, there's six hundred and fifty-five households with six hundred and fifty-five different points of view in this village. And, um, that's uncomfortable when you're dealing with an issue as hot and emotional as police reform. So I really appreciate, um, the amount of thoughtfulness and planning and communication you've gone through, um, coming up with calendars and timelines and being flexible and working with everyone. You know, whether it's meeting in person or online or whatever, but what I see is a huge commitment, a huge amount of time that you're devoting to this and you're, um, providing as much transparency through this process as possibly could be done. And, um, it's hard to do that. So I want to commend you for your efforts and, um, remind the trustees that there's five people on the board. Um, and it's five votes to make these decisions and you guys are doing this all together. And Kathleen's doing, you know, the work with, um, with Officer Burke and bringing it to you all to vote and you're voting together and, and making these decisions and, and not everyone's going to agree. It, it'll, it'll never be that way. And that's what makes you a great board. Is that people don't agree. You, you get better with disagreements, um, when, when people challenge you. So anyway, um, I appreciate the bravery it takes to do that well. Um, so thank you. That's all.
Anyone else, Michael?
Uh, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Who is the second?
Give it to Marie.
Sorry.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.